There's one.
Call the meeting order. Join us. A pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with original justice.
Now, it's from the large commander of all.
Yep, Brian.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
John.
Here.
Here.
The motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Ryan, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
John.
Jeff, I.
Consent agenda?
No.
So the city's on. Or anything? Anybody online? Okay, closes coming. Monthly report. Russell didn't give me anything, so.
Yeah.
Not a monthly report for him.
No, he's still alive. Um, his wife has COVID, he's not doing so good.
That's too bad.
Yeah, so he hasn't tested, but I'm pretty sure he hasn't.
Social. Hopefully he gets well.
Civic distancing.
All right, now can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? If there are no questions.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Ryan, I.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
John.
Jeff, I.
Um, Parks and Parks, please work.
Do you guys have any questions on anything that's on there?
You like register people for the Uker stuff?
Oh, we don't, it's just, just.
They show up.
People show up, yeah.
Interesting.
Yep.
That was a big success last year, wasn't it?
Um, we got, say, one, two, three, four, four-ish, four to five groups there in place, and that's what? It's sixteen, twenty people. Um, so yeah, I hope it grows. Um, one of my workers who usually was doing it, um, has been off for a few months, she got, she got hurt, so she, hopefully she's coming back soon, um, to, to take over, but until that time, one of us will, will step up. Um, but we're so hopeful that we get a good amount of people to come.
I can't remember, do we charge for that?
We don't, no.
Just community.
Yep. We don't have any expenses going out either besides, I mean, I guess an hour or two of, uh, but that'd be the only expense that we have that go into a card we have, um, upstairs somehow, and everything else is covered. They started actually bringing their own snaps and such too, so. Um, the only thing I will update on is the, the park, other, um, the playground we kind of talked about last week. Um, don't have a huge update other than to say I called, um, Cole today, he's the one that we bought the playground from, um, to see where we are with a few of the pieces that we need left to finish the install. Um, and he is still working with the playground company to work things out. Um, it is the national conference, I think the end of last week, this week, and so he's struggling getting quick answers. Um, so he's working on it, calling him every day, trying to get answers for us. Um, but I have no news other than to say he's, has. So he knows we want it as soon as possible, obviously, to keep rolling. Um, the crew, we met with them last week. Um, same thing, he, as soon as we get it, we'll come in and finish everything up, so it's kind of a waiting game to get what we need to be able to finish install. Um, port in place people, same thing, they're ready to rock and roll as soon as we say. Come on over, so hopefully we start moving again.
Are all, all the service providers in Iowa?
Um, so the, no, I want to say, well, I want to say yes, actually, so the, the people that are doing the installer in Iowa, um, port in places in Iowa. Um, yeah, correct. Um, so it shouldn't be, it just depends on schedules once, okay, so we're ready. Where are you, are you in the middle of a project, are you, where does it fall, so?
The pieces you're waiting for, like, pulled down to the ground?
Yeah, so when, yeah, so there was some, uh, stability beams at the bottom of the slides that, um, I think that the instant stall crew didn't install all of them that came with, um, which is problem A. Um, but problem B is they weren't all there either, um, to be able to finish the install, so we're waiting for the rest of the support beams, and then there is still one question out on one of the bars and whether or not it's, it's strong enough and what the playground company is going to do. I don't know if you've been down there, but we have like spider web, like the rogue spider web. Um, the single pre-bar just seems wobbly when you, I mean, obviously adults aren't supposed to be standing on the spider web, but multiple kids. Um, so they're still looking into that too, to see what we can do to, to fix said, said issue as well, so. Work in progress is my update.
I should know this, but did we open the park yet? I mean, is the, the trails?
I mean, it's technically open, we took the sign down.
On the signs now, okay. Opened, it's still posted.
For sure.
Still posted off of Cox Springs Road, but basically the trail is open. No frisbee golf though. Please report.
Yeah, you guys have my report, any questions on that?
Is this the first time we've done active evacuation drills?
No, we, we do them every year.
Annual or?
Yes, bi-annual, we do the evacuation every other year, and then we do the actual, the evacuations every other year, and then the other year is just the lockdown for. Yeah, so we do it every year, just evacuations every other.
So this is both pieces.
This is both pieces, it makes it a little more complex. Correct, yes. Correct, yep, it just makes it a little more complex of moving kids from school over to the community center, but that's just more of a heads up if you guys see it that day. Um, I know it's still coming, but I'll report on how it goes. And then as for the, uh, side or, uh, stop signs, you want to get into that a little bit? Sidewalks are on Ulliana Cox Springs, uh, Dean put them up yesterday afternoon. Um, so far, it's been relatively good, I'd like to say. We have had people going through them, and we do, and my guys, everybody is trying to educate everybody on this as right now, to make sure they're watching, but overall, you know, with us watching it, relatively pretty good so far, it's just going to take some time, or, you know, the people to, you know, know, realize that they're there, and I, I think.
We're all creatures of habit, but I think they show up really well, and the bright yellow sign that pedestrian, you know, you're approaching the pedestrian crosswalk, it's before the hill.
Yep, Dean put up that stop ahead sign, um, today, so I think the signs, I mean, it's just going to take a little bit of time, but yeah, overall, so, so good.
Sure, any questions on the, uh, report? Um, just to elaborate a little bit on, um, what Stacy was saying on the park, I guess is the only other thing that I need, would add, would be, um, the parking stalls at the end of Myla have been finished. Um, yesterday I did have Pleasner come, Steve Pleasner come and paint them. We created thirteen stalls there, so that turned out really well. Um, was really nice down there, actually. Um, and then, uh, seating has, has been completed, and the, uh, straw mulch has been put on, so basically the trail project itself should be pretty much completed. Um, since I guess, uh, our work session, um, Heather Drive has been paved, surface has been put on there, and, uh, and Cassandra as well.
Nice.
Outside of that, I really don't have no new news.
Engineering, Jacob.
Steve normally does those reports, and with Steve's dad, um, I did not receive one.
Uh, P E D C, quarter of the report.
Uh, yeah. So. We have a, we have a lot, I just don't know, uh, where to start, some high level things, just to give you some context, uh, P D C did finally receive their five oh one C six tax with them status, which is great. Currently working in the process of a website for us, uh, we're working with Augustana Web Guild, uh, for some design and content that we've been working with, so, um, more to come on that, hopefully in the coming months, be able to have something launched. Um, biggest update that we have right now is just our work that we've been doing with the Community Heart and Soul. Um, I can certainly dive in. Uh, but more detail on that, but see if we have any questions upfront that they want to ask, happy to answer.
How about your new hire?
It's part of it. Um, we hired Denise Grant, she's going to be our, uh, community coordinator. Um, her main role is going to be, uh, working towards community outreach, uh, engagement efforts, to understand on my needs of the community and provide solutions to citizens and businesses of Piasta, so very excited to have Denise part of, uh, part of P D C and, uh, kind of leading, spearheading this initiative for Community Heart and Soul. She's got a long background of leadership, um, brings a lot to the table, so very excited to have her.
I don't know if you want to share anything. Speech.
Didn't know I was going to have to talk.
Me either.
Um, I'm Denise, as you said, I'm very excited about this project, I am a retired, uh, school principal. I started out as a teacher in Western Dubuque, and I was there for a long time, probably twenty years, and then, uh, went back and got my master's degree at Loras, and, um, was hired by Holy Family in Dubuque, and so I served as principal at Holy Ghost downtown, and then at Resurrection. Uh, I was at Resurrection for the last seven years. Um, loved my time at both places, loved my time everywhere. Um, so I'm used to working sixty hours a week, and I'm not. Um, I like retirement, but, um, I like to keep busy, and so this really appealed to me, and I'm very excited for the community, I just think it's a wonderful opportunity for the community, and, um, we have such a multi-generational community, and I think it will appeal to everyone, and I think people will be excited to give their input, because I know in other communities, like F Worth has the water, uh, the water park, I could see that being a wish here. You know, I could see, uh, a, a number of things being, being, just because of the young families we've got. So, yeah, I'm excited to be on board. Thank you.
So the, just to clarify kind of the general goals of the position, it's it's general economic development, building relationships with the businesses in addition to project managing kind of the Community Heart and Soul, the front end of that. It's kind of be the arms and legs of P E D C. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're, I'm, I'm super excited moving forward with that project. Makes sense.
We're very close, so the first step, obviously, part of it was, uh, getting the community coordinator hired, and, um, there's a C grant application that we have completed, we're just waiting on a few more, um, support letters from others in the community, and, uh, once we have that, we'll be able to finally submit it, that, uh, application to Community Heart and Soul, and then we can start, um, requesting donations from donors to, uh, get this ten thousand dollar seed grant match, uh, that's up for grabs, to help establish, um, the starting process of engaging businesses, citizens in the community, find out what they're looking for, uh, aspirations for what Piasta looks like in the future, and, uh, really start goal setting, getting a game plan put in place.
Are you guys planning to do any formal goal setting for P E D C at large? I mean, a few months back, we were talking about you engaging somebody. What have you decided to do with that whole conversation about setting goals for yourselves?
Uh, yeah, we did discuss that, and there was a lot that we were wanting to like, get accomplished first, we felt like we weren't quite ready to do a goal setting plan, just was still wanting to get, um, our five oh one C six status completed, and then this Community Heart and Soul initiative came, um, was, you know, came to us, and we were all one thousand percent in support of it, so we kind of put all of our focus on getting ourselves ready to get that off the ground, uh, and we're just about there, and, uh, Steph laid some of that still on our radar that we'll continue to look at different at some point.
Yeah, one of the things that they told us from the Dubuque Foundation is that in this process of the heart and soul, we'll be essentially gathering input from all the stakeholders of the community, find out what their priorities are, so then we can turn around and say, okay, this is what the community wants, not just, that's what we want, but the community wants, and then from there, we'll be able to lean into what our goals are going to be strategically. Versus us just kind of guessing what the community wants.
Questions for the report? Like I said, no mayor's report, so. Uh, development?
I had a meeting today with, uh, Jim Conlon and Bill Mcilachus on, um, utilities, the road, and um, I'll have more information in my weekly summary to you all, uh, there's quite a bit to go into, and I think it's just better covered that way. Nothing that's secretive at this point, but it was a really good discussion, and we're going to try to meet again next month, so that way everybody's on the same page moving forward. I think it's probably going to be a good idea to bring in Sam Shea, um, our representative from, uh, DOT. Yeah, because I think that, uh, things are starting to move a little bit faster, not knowing what those projects are going to be over there, because they really didn't allude to it at this point, but, um, DOT needs to be aware that there's going to be a lot of activity here. So to keep them.
Time to get them to move.
Yep, to keep them fully updated.
Now, they, DOT, they started a study, right?
Well, I sent an email out to Sam Shea today to find out.
That they actually started, yeah.
Right. And I know that there were some, uh, discussions about, Dean, close your ears, around about on Thunder Hills Road, um, coming up on Thunder Valley Drive. Um, because of the truck traffic and traffic coming in and out of there, but that was their discussion, so those are questions that I have for DOT that have to be answered, because if there are rumor at this point, I want to squash it. Yeah. I know Dean's excited.
Here we go, Dan. Come on, bud.
Want to say that a little louder?
All right. Um, move on to the administration's side. Uh, A is twenty twenty-four eighty-five resolution to set public hearing for utility percentage rates or outside corporate boundaries of the city of Piasta.
Council discussed this a few weeks ago, we're going to set that public hearing, I'd like to set that public hearing for the twenty-second.
Are we getting together to discuss? Will we discuss with Thunder Hills or the Thunder Ridge people as far as the amount that we feel we need to set aside, the amount that we need before this, or?
Yes, in fact, I set a meeting up tomorrow at ten thirty, hope, hopefully you'll be able to make it, you'll be in my office mostly all morning anyway, uh, to start that discussion.
So are we going to be able to discuss it before this public hearing?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, we can do it through email, or we can have a special meeting to discuss that, if you'd like.
We just talked about the fact that we'll try to be, have the information like publicly transparent by the time of the hearing. So it's in the cities trying to get here, and, you know, so people have all the pieces.
That's the plan, to get them all the information while in advance.
You actually want to work through. We just want to make sure.
Yeah, I'd rather work for the, work through our side of things before we have a public hearing. So we know where we stand versus having a public hearing, not knowing where we stand yet.
Sure, uh, we can set a, a meeting up after we do our discussions and put the numbers together.
But since we can't really talk with each other through email, I mean, maybe we need.
Well, you can, but it's one-on-one.
Yeah, but I think we should have.
Yeah, so.
Roundtable. Like meetings. Let's do a light workshop. Just a one topic work session.
Okay.
Sometime next week, so we can put it to bed this week.
You here next week?
Absolutely.
Okay, we're here, right?
Whenever you guys get your stuff done.
Yeah.
So you guys are meeting tomorrow, or you're meeting with T R?
No, no, we're just meeting tomorrow, it's just Dean, myself, and Marcy, and then that way we're putting together the projects, whether it be, uh, repair, replacement, or new, and then what that cost would be, and then we're also factoring in our labor. Right.
Is there a way, and I've asked this question a million times, and I think I know the answer, is finding out as close as possible what that fifty percent has been paid to us from when we?
What it really?
What, what that number is, we've got a range, we've got a range from two hundred thousand to a million.
Yep.
And it's somewhere in the middle there, and I'd like to know exactly where that's.
You know, I mean, I think that really bears on what we need the fund to accrue, and how fast.
I guess so, important piece of the puzzle.
At the same token, I want to get us through this process, so I can setting the, setting the public hearing, I think is a good idea. Absolutely. So. You get a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion, uh, for the resolution to set a public hearing for utility percentage rates for the outside corporate boundary areas of the city of Piasta, we'll set the public hearing for October twenty-two.
I'll second. Ryan, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
John.
Jeff, I.
All right. Twenty twenty-four eighty-six resolution approving pay estimate number three submitted by Conley Construction for the Kelly Oaks multi-use trail project, Dean?
Yes, I have, um, looked over the, uh, pay app, uh, made a few corrections and, uh, placed it back into Jacob's hand, or Jake's hands, I'm sorry. Um, so yeah, corrections were made and, um, submitted appropriately.
This won't be our last one, right? This is a project finalization or acceptance, or this is not, no.
Oh, next month should be with the, or the end of October should be with the exception of a change.
I'll make a motion to approve the best estimate number three submitted by Conley Construction for the Kelly Oaks, our multi-use trail project.
I'll second. I, I.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
John.
Jeff, I.
Past. Twenty twenty-four eighty-seven resolution improvement, Piast community center, city hall improvement, pay estimate number ten, release of drainage to Tricon construction. All right, so that has all the items been addressed?
Um, they have, and we have Jacob in the audience tonight, so if anyone has any, uh, items, like, ask him.
Jacob, I appreciated your memo about the cracks, I guess my only question is, if it doesn't turn out, I mean, if it turns out that there's still a problem and things continue to crack, do we have any recourse as a city?
So, uh, upon council's acceptance of the project, it starts the clock on the two-year maintenance bond.
Okay.
That, that Tricon is supporting.
And in you guys' professional estimation, from an engineering standpoint?
We were going to see crack changes or something, would we see them in that two-year period?
Oh, yes, for sure.
Okay.
You know, and, yeah, I mean, unfortunately, concrete cracks, I think the, the ones that, uh, have shown themselves out there became apparent after the polishing, so it's likely they started to form, you know, when it was curing.
Yeah. Okay.
So, you know, at the end of that two-year maintenance bond, we can take a look at, you know, obviously through this memo, uh, we've documented where they are. Um, if any others form, you know, contractor can, you know, we can go from there if we want to try a different finish, an epoxy finish or something, uh, if you don't like the aesthetics of them, but, you know, I guess in our opinion, there's no structural, um, implications that we're seeing there.
Structural integrity is good.
Correct.
I just want to add that B and K did an outstanding job managing this project.
Thank you.
Appreciative of it. Um, the guys from Tricon, they were very responsive as well.
Big project. Two point nine. Can I get a motion for?
I make a motion to, uh, resolution in Piast community center city hall improvement. Project estimate number ten, releases of retainage submitted by Tricon.
I'll second. And this is full acceptance of the project that, right, Grant's closed. Ryan, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
John.
Jeff, I.
I would run.
Go quick before we. I'm leaving. The twenty twenty-four eighty-eight resolution in support of the Piasta Economic Development Corporation, P D C, for the benefit of the city of Piasta, Iowa's Community Heart and Soul project.
You all have an opportunity to look this over at the work session. Um, I did put, uh, some added language in there, uh, as requested during the work session, to basically say that we will support them on a mutually agreed-upon amount.
That was, changes that we hear?
Yes.
Thank you.
You bet.
Get a motion to approve. Like, what, eighty-eight, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution in support of P E D C's, uh, for the Heart and Soul project. I'll second. Ryan, I.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
John.
Jeff, I.
Justin, I'd like to add, Denise, would you like us to send that to you, the completed resolution? Okay. And I think I may not have your email address. Okay. Thank you.
I guess I just have one, one question in like for Megan or Spencer, it's now the community foundation can be the fiduciary to receive donations if and when they come?
So there's, yeah, they're holding an account under the Dubuque Foundation that's exclusively for this.
And this sort of activates that, this resolution activates that project or that process? Kind of?
Because right now we have no money in there.
Right, no, right, we didn't have a way to receive it, we didn't have a.
Yeah, we don't have, like, we don't want to put it.
Yeah, so with P D C only being a five oh one C six, basically the money that we take in prevents us from having to pay taxes on it, but we're not a full nonprofit, five oh one C three, so, uh, Community Foundation Greater Dubuque would set up, um, an operating fund account in P D C's name, basically acting as our sponsor, so that donors that want to make contributions to Piasta, for Piasta, through the Community Heart and Soul process, uh, they would receive a tax benefit, uh, for those donations, and, uh,
And they also act as payroll for.
Yes.
Okay.
So they'll.
And file the taxes for us and do all those things that we need.
Yeah. So they'll send out like gift receipts for any donors that made anything, uh, any contributions, they'll process all payroll and tax documents for Denise. Um, they can make direct payments for coordinator expenses or any other expenses for events, projects, they'll be, um, get involved with things like that.
Okay, so if P E D C receives funding and contributions to P E D C from like an area business or something, you can receive those. P E D C can receive those.
Correct.
And you don't pay tax on those incoming revenues.
Correct.
That's what the C six does.
Yeah, it's just if the company wants to make the donation, they want it to be tax deductible.
Or.
Then the company itself wants it to be tax deductible, and we can't receive it.
Yeah. Well, but then the company would be giving to the Community Heart and Soul, the Piasta funded initiative, right, and not P E D C. Funding, the funds are, I'm kind of getting at like the long-term funding plan for P E D C, and a part of it is like how, how that's going to work, I don't think it's the Community Heart and Soul stuff.
Right, I mean, we can still take in money for our piece, you know, for the fundraising events that we're going to do and things like that, that's sort of separate, just the marketing pieces and things like that, that we need to continue to run as a P D C individual, but the piece that's tying into her soul will be held with them.
Good, yeah, so I understood it, that's helpful.
He's a lucky guy.
It's complicated.
Definitely a lot of weird parts, for sure.
Was there any thought of moving the five oh one C six to a five oh one C three, or is it?
Yes, so from my understanding, uh, it's not necessarily out of the question. Um, there's just very black and white straight guidelines that come to, um, giving economic developments, five oh one C three. So I did some research on it in Dyersville, for example, that has their five oh one C three nonprofit status. Uh, they were basically grandfathered in from when they were established back in the early skids, so, um, it's not saying that we won't be able to get it, it's just we have to get some of these projects and initiatives under our belt first, to then go back to the IRS and show, uh, how we're lessening the burden of the community and the residents here in Piasta, making an impact, so it's not necessarily out of the question, it's just something that's going to have to take time, that we can explore down the road.
And you get you some projects to work on, what you're saying. So we're trying. I think the reality is for this Community Heart and Soul thing, it's, it's more, it's more turnkey to use the Community Foundation and the apparatus they have set up to be the, the front end. The community foundation and the apparatus they have set up to be the the front end fiduciary, so we can actually get moving. Otherwise, we could be talking about this in two years, you know.
Yeah, because it took, you know, as less, it took a ridiculously long time to receive and get this one, and this was the easy one to get. I mean, I must get it or something crazy, I don't know.
Yeah. Submitted in December twenty three. It's got the approval in August, so.
Eight hundred, it's got to get federal, some federal tax.
They're busy.
Eighty six thousand.
They're busy.
All right.
I'll make motion for the B D C funding request.
I'll second.
Just that one question, Mr. Mayor Protown, can you guys just articulate a little bit, the seventy one hundred for general operating expenses? What are the things that are under that, is that like a six-month window that you're trying to cover?
Yeah, so the additional expenses came from recommendation from the Greater Dubuque or Community Foundation Greater Dubuque. They threw in numbers, this is based off of their experience and what they've done in other communities. Was thirty five thousand with the initial ten thousand dollar donors, plus ten thousand dollar match. And then the additional, obviously, for payroll. Other, he listed like other operating expenses as far as like marketing material, we start looking at doing events and things like that, there's going to be. Possibly venues rentals. And marketing material, there's going to be advertisement, things like that, so it's just a general, their guideline. Dollar amount to go off of.
So it's really based pretty much entirely on community heart and soul effort, or are there other things? I mean, the the website and the the data mining and stuff that P E D C is trying to do.
The website is definitely unsure as far as like if there's going to be, I mean, it's been pretty minimal expenses so far with the website from where we're at. We don't know if it's gonna, you know, if there's something that. We're going to have to invest more in. There's been conversations around maybe like putting a video together as far as advertisement. Talk about the community art soul, which is what Piasta is looking to do. I don't have like necessarily specific bullet points of what it's going to be used for.
But the target is six months, I mean, this is what we think, right, six months, mostly community heart and soul.
Yes.
And then it will transition to the small town dreams project.
When we get to the end of the visioning phase.
Yeah.
And that's where we have the opportunity to get the additional hundred thousand.
Right.
Match from them.
Right, the first match is a seed match, right? Ryan, I.
Lexia.
John.
Sorry. Thank you, guys. For your work.
Thank you.
Yeah, excited, moving forward.
Twenty twenty four ninety resolution amending the city of Piasta Police Department policy.
Action on that tonight is where we've got a legal opinion, and bring it back here shortly.
Sounds good. My stuff wasn't highlighted, I couldn't tell. What was, whatever I'm looking at.
We've been the last page or the last two pages.
I know, I look, I don't have any highlights, so I don't know if it's here, it's.
I had highlights.
It's you.
I'm in the pro version.
I just wanted to say that.
You don't want me to have highlights, but no, I'm just kidding. I want to have highlights, but I'll just talk to you. All right, we'll actually take it on F. Trying to be a blog. I'm not trying to be a blog.
The public hearing in the ordinance amending title seven traffic code, chapter seventy four, schedule one of the Piasta Municipal Code. This is for taking the decreasing the speed limit on Thunder Hills Road from fifty to thirty five in the city limits.
So I have a question about that, I know you guys probably discussed it at the work session, but is that from twenty? To where it's thirty five now?
Yeah.
Or, it's just a whole, this whole.
The whole, the whole stretch, yeah.
Because the county's got it from Thunder Hills Road north.
The graph that was on there kind of made it look like it was Thunder Valley.
No, it'd be the whole stretch.
I told you. The graph when we were putting it together.
Yeah. I didn't do the graph.
Just wait on the county's.
For me or the bus?
Do this, so they can.
Right, go forward.
We've been getting multiple.
So we're setting?
Yeah.
No, the actual public. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion, open a public hearing. I'll second. Ryan, I.
Lexia.
Just waiting to see.
Justin, I.
John.
Jeff, I. I do have a question on the internet, do all the, I mean, when we do a public hearing for this kind of a thing, it's general notice. On our website and those kinds of things, where do the property owners in and around the road get it?
It's general notice.
It's just general notice, okay.
It's in the paper, obviously, as well. We do what statutorially required, I don't want to get in the habit of mailing letters out.
I understand.
And we we put everything on Facebook, it's on the website, so there's there's plenty, and in the paper.
Have the city staff received any comments since we've started chatting about it last couple meetings?
I think you probably have received some of them.
I have, and it's all positive, but they're all in support of it, and not had. Stay the same.
And we had the one gentleman in our work session that was like.
Yeah, he actually wanted to decrease it, that was here at the work session, he wanted to decrease it from thirty five to twenty five near the houses. Has to go through the county to go through that, because that's county area, and that's what I told him, I advised him to do, if that's what he wants to proceed with it.
We just need Meg to drive slower, she's on her way to. I'll make a, I'll make a motion, if you're ready, make a motion, set the public hearing.
No, this is our, we're holding the public hearing.
This is the.
We didn't need to vote open it.
Is everybody online, this is it?
No, not online.
Do I have a, I have status, and nobody's seen it.
I would just make another motion to close it.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Ryan, I.
You don't have to do that, you guys are rock stars tonight. You're flex guy. You're overachievers. This one actually.
It's official, the mayor Protown has just closed the hearing.
We get paid more if we vote.
Annual operating expenses are going up.
You were really difficult tonight.
I just thought it was going to start being difficult today.
Gotta have fun.
Your name, it's awesome, take. Want to make sure you spell it right. It's hard because we have Kathy Curd and you, yours go to your. We'll take it up with Kathy.
Twenty twenty four ten ordinance amending title seven traffic code, chapter seventy four, schedule one of the Piast municipal code, first reading. What we just talked about.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance amending traffic. Code chapter seventy four, schedule one of the Piast municipal code, first reading.
I'll second.
Ryan, I.
Lexia.
Justin, I.
John.
Jeff, I.
Is there any interest in moving this along and?
I prefer to have at least one more reading, just so there's a chance for a public to speak, even though this is a pretty important change, but.
All right, citizen comment? Or anything other than was on the agenda tonight? Little citizen comment. The motion to adjourn.
I make motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Ryan, I.
Lexia.
Justin, I.
Hi.
Jeff, I.